Good evening, everyone. I would like to call our City Council Committee the whole meeting for Wednesday, June 5th, 2019, to order. You know, at this time, as we're for our moment of silence and we're recognizing one of our heroes here this evening, you know, it was seventy-five years since D-Day. A group of people who came together and risked everything so our freedoms could be maintained. Have family members who were in Vietnam and in War on Terror. A great family, and thank you for being here. But more importantly, there are Army and basically servicemen and women that are continuing to do that every day in this country, all around the world. So keeping that all in mind, let's have a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. I think Alderman Dickman's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Stand, please.
Before we do that, I'm going to go stand down.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Alderman Dickman, for leading the pledge today. And Brian, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Tomkins.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Clule.
Present.
Mattson.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Nine present, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brian. Again, I want to wish you all a good evening as we begin the meeting of this City Council. I would again like to welcome all of those in attendance and also those who are viewing our meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV and Internet broadcasts. We are happy that you are participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handheld devices as they can interfere with the audio system and be disruptive here in the chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on a committee agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that standing committee. You will also have an opportunity to address the council under the public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself or the committee chair, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So thank you again for being here this evening. And now, we have a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this eve- nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. We have eight public hearings this evening. Again, a public hearing brings things to people's attention. Some of these will show up again in the agenda later on. So we do the public hearings, and we have some presentations we'll make before we go on with the rest of the meeting. So first, our first one is community development. Alderman Rita Rossen is the chair, and Alderman Ambrose is vice-chair to open that public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. Can- am I on speaker? Okay, I can't hear it from here. So we have two items on the community development agenda. The first item is, well, the public hearing will not be held as this item inadvertently was not published in the paper. So we'll be moving on to the second item on the agenda, which is a public hearing for the ordinance for case REZ-19-06, being the request of Jasvier Sayeni to rezone .56 acres, more or less, of property located at 4607 North Pine Street, from C1 Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District to C2 Corridor Commercial Zoning District, and this is in Ward Eight. And as you will see on your agenda, the P&amp;Z Commission recommends denial of the request. A three-fourth majority is required. And normally, I would have staff come up first, but I understand the owner is here and wants to make a request first. I will start with the owner, if that's okay, and then move to staff, and then public. And I realize there's a number of people here from the public, and I'll get to that in a second. Do you want to come up and state your name and address, sir? Thank you.
My name is Bob Montagno. My address is 2325 West Forty-Ninth Street, Davenport, Iowa. I- we want to table this issue till the next meeting?
Can you pull the microphone down? There we go. Thank you. That's okay. Go ahead.
That better?
Yeah.
Okay. We want to table this issue till the next meeting? Okay?
So just for everyone's, because I can barely hear you. You're indicating you'd like to table this item for another cycle, which is two weeks out.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So in light of that, I still want, you can go ahead and sit down, sir. Thank you. I still would like someone from staff to come up and just kind of explain what the denial piece is for, and I recognize that there are people here in the audience that wanted to speak, and you will have an opportunity to do that. I don't want to waste your time, so we'll definitely hear your concerns. Ryan, thank you.
Ryan Rustnack with Community Planning. I'm sorry, what was the question again?
Just a brief discussion of why there's a denial.
Sure. So the request went through Plan and Zoning Commission. As you recall, we had a zoning ordinance update. That became effective on January 20th of this year. One of the changes to the zoning ordinances was that the retail sale of alcoholic beverages, and we're talking about for package sales, the, it was limited, it was not allowed in the C1 district, but was allowed in the C2 district. So we have a business that is looking to redevelop the property. They have C1 zoning right now with a gas station. They are non-conforming with respect to the retail sale of alcoholic beverages. So when the initial proposal came in, we said, look, if you want to, and when it's a non-conforming use, you cannot relocate that use, even if it's on the same property. And so in order to reestablish the alcohol use on the property, they were compelled to request the C2 zoning. I think during the process, there was a question on if C2 zoning was appropriate here. C1 zoning is more of a neighborhood-type zoning. C2 tends to be oriented towards major transportation corridors such as Fifty-third and West Kimberly Road. And so there was several residents that spoke in opposition. At the neighborhood meeting, there were people that spoke in favor, but ultimately, staff recommended denial, and P&amp;Z voted to recommend denial as well unanimously. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item?
Madam Chair, may I ask?
Yes.
A point of just clarification. Since we are tabling this, do we want to continue through this process?
Yes, I particularly would like to have, let the public say their piece because they've shown up this evening to do that.
Yeah, that's great. That's great, thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Doris Hawkins, 1446 Kelling Street. When we moved into the West Village addition, it was a nice, quiet little area, and the people, when they moved onto Forty-seventh Street, that was a nice, quiet little area. Now, if you go up there at any time, rush hour, whenever, we have a devil of a time getting out of our addition, because we come out to Cheyenne, we either have to go east to Division Street, which is now Four Lane with that Quick Star right down the way, or we have to go west to Pine Street, where there's a four-way stop sign, right in front of the store we're talking about. It's a very busy area. There's going to be an accident at that four-way stop, because people who are not from the area don't always realize it's a four-way stop, and so they're not doing their stopping. So there's going to be an accident. It's just a matter of how, when, and how severe it's going to be. The roads in that neighborhood, if you ever come up there and travel them, are not ready for more commercial anything.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Come on up, state your name and address.
Jane Hafranann. I live on Pine Street, 4706 North Pine, so right down the road. I'm here tonight because I'm very concerned about the possible expansion of GD liquor and gas station. I, like many of my neighbors, have been dealing with problems from this business for many years. Recently, I obtained a police report from the Davenport Police Department detailing incidences at this business. Within less than a three-year period, just this business alone had ninety-four incidences that were called into the police department. This is a residential neighborhood with families, children, and pets. We don't need this to be a twenty-four-hour establishment. If it's a twenty-four-hour establishment, that will change our entire neighborhood. And as you know, GD Express has had, and I'll tell you kind of what some of the calls have been, seven weapons firearm calls to the police station, twelve theft burglary, burglary alarm calls, five damage vandalism mischief, property damage, twelve harassment, stalking, domestic disturbance, abuse, neglect calls, sixteen trespassing unwanted activity, disturbance nuisance, ten warrant checks, three business check calls, thirteen traffic violations, two drug calls, eight public service calls, two fraud deception calls, four miscellaneous calls, for a total of ninety-four calls. And there have been, and more than half of those calls have been in the evening. Now, this is a neighborhood where people have to get up in the morning. I got woke up last Monday night, eleven o'clock at night, and this person was cleaning out their car at the gas station, twenty-five minutes. I finally called 911, and I said, "I'm sorry, I hate to call because it's not an emergency, but I am not listening to this music any longer." She said, "Well, how bad is it?" And I said, "Well, let me put the phone out so you can listen to it." She's like, "Are you at your house?" And I go, "Yeah." I said, "This has got to stop. They should close at ten o'clock like every other business. This is a neighborhood. This is not Kimberly. This is not Fifty-third. It's not the highway. It's a neighborhood." I have also spoken to Lieutenant Smith of the Davenport Police Department, and he encouraged me to call the police department whenever I witness illegal or illicit activity, which there's a lot going on at that gas station. I further encourage all my fellow neighbors to do the same. We need to keep our neighborhood safe and hold GD Express accountable for the unsafe element that they're bringing to our neighborhood. If this council votes to approve this rezoning request and allow them to expand their hours of operation, our neighborhood will be forever changed. Our property values will decline, and I'm certain of that. I would ask every council member to consider that before you make a vote. And I do have, I did stop at the police station. I do have all those reports. So, and this is not just the GD Express at our location. The one that's located on Seventh Street, they've had seventy-six calls to the police. The one located on West Central Park, which isn't far from our neighborhood, a hundred and six calls. That's ridiculous. I don't think they should be allowed to expand. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to comment? Come on up, come on up. State your name and address.
Mario Martinez, 4524 North Pine Street, right in front of it. I definitely do not want them to expand their business, because, I mean, I moved in my house like about eight years ago, and I remember the first two years was very nice and peaceful. And then after they opened that, then it, I mean, every time I got to go pick up all their bottles and stuff that are purchased from there, so I can mow my lawn. Then I got two kids, and of course, I do not want them to grow in that loud neighborhood. And I mean, I've seen a lot of stuff, like, for example, all the fightings and stuff there. So I definitely do, I do not approve that. I mean, I hope you guys make a good decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to comment on this item? Come on up, state your name and address.
My name is James Carr, and I live at 4626 Kelling Street, very close to the location that this applicant is hoping to expand. My only point to make is it's just the wrong location. It's the wrong location for this type of expansion. From what I understand, the current business is about twenty-five-hundred square feet, and he wants to enlarge it up to about five thousand. In my mind, it's almost like he wants to put a Quick Star on that, on that spot. The size of the retail operation's going to be bigger, the, the capacity for, for gas sales is going to increase, and that location is just not designed for that. It's C1 is appropriate for that. So I hope that the council will consider this and vote to deny this. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we want to get the phone?
Hello?
And I assume the phone will stop ringing at some point. But with the background music, does anyone else from the public would like to comment on this item? You never know what you'll get at City Council. Come on up, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Dot Richards. I live at 2805 West Forty-seventh Street. I'd just like to compound on what they've all said. I live at the end of a dead-end street. When I come out of my street, the only way I can go is basically south, because trying to go north, the traffic is unbelievable there now. When I was on my way down here tonight, it was, it was a road race, and it was unbelievable. Granted, they were busy. The gas station was very busy. I could see why he would want to expand. But that neighborhood, it's a neighborhood. We do not want that kind of traffic, and like they said, the roads will not support it. And when they build, if they build again, we're going to have stormwater runoff going down Pine. Now it's floodwater going down Pine, and if they put another building on there, it's going to double that. Our, our system in that area cannot do it, and like you said, it's a residential area. We have kids playing on a road. People come down there thinking it's a commercial business area. It's not. They're going to want to turn on our road, which is a dead end, and think they can go through and cut up and around. They can't, which means they're flying down our street, which they do, and then they're coming back up again. And there's kids playing out there. I, I oppose this, this rezoning that they want. They can keep it the way it is, but do not expand, please.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to comment on this item? Come on up. State your name and address.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Dietz-Mukami. I live like two houses away from this, and it's 4609 Cheyenne Avenue. I severely oppose this, because there's so much trash, and then I see kids playing, and I don't want the kids to get hurt. And I'd really like to keep this a neighborhood. I only moved in just a year ago, and it seems like a very, it seems like an all-right neighborhood, you know? And I just don't want it to get any worse. And that's all I have to say about that. Thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to comment on this item? Come on up, sir, and state your name and address for the record.
I live at 4625 Kelling Street. And one of the problems over there with the traffic and that is you've got school buses dropping kids off, and somebody's going to get run over. And, because people drive down that street, they don't stay in their own lane, they're, I almost hit somebody head-on the other day over there, because they're wandering around, they're texting, these young kids are texting with their phones, they're not paying attention to what they're doing, and you're going to get a kid ran over. And that gas station doesn't need to be open twenty-four hours. And the rezoning there is going to just ruin that whole area. And, and the rest of it, I agree with all the rest of them there. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to comment on this item? Come on up, sir, state your name and address for the record.
I live at 4320 North Kelling. I strongly oppose this gentleman getting the allowance to go to C2. Plan and Zone put two years into putting together a plan. They looked at forty-four thousand parcels, is what I was told in the city of Davenport. That is in fairness to everybody that's in town, to keep our community safe. If, if we bend the rules now, it just opens everything back up again, and it disrupts everything and all the time and effort they put into this. I could go on and reiterate what everybody has said here about different things. We all have different views. You know, he got a liquor license a few years ago to start selling liquor, and that's when the trouble really started. I just want you to know I object to it a hundred percent, and I wish you guys as aldermen and elected officials would please take the recommendation of the Plan and Zone Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to comment on this item? Come on up, state your name and address for the record.
It's hard to hear back there. I just wanted to let you know. My name is Judith Lee, 4621 Kelling Street. I have some new things that I wanted to bring up, as well as some additional information about things I had brought up earlier. And I have some pictures. I hope I have some, there we go. This is the area that we're talking about. This is the green acres area. You can see that it's highly residential, and you can see where the 4607 North Pine Street is, the GD Express. It's mostly churches and modest homes with large lots. This is the two-hundred-foot area that I just wanted to point out. You've seen this before, and you also have in your packet that there was only ten percent protesting for within that two-hundred feet. But I just want to point out, and do you have a, a red? No, okay. I just want to point out, you can see where the gas station is. You can see that, yeah, that's the gas station. You've got comments from the Hawkeye Tap. There's a house right behind it that is basically for sale. That lot is for sale, and the owners of GD Express bought twelve feet of that lot so that they could expand. They've already bought it. At the time this went out, there was nobody in that house. The owner is in council bluffs. You've got that strip mall, and they're just, it's basically a gaming store and just an office for J.D. Cousins and a couple of other small things. Across the street, they included two of the eighteen, but one of those houses has been demolished, and it's a Buddhist temple. They are not going to comment, because they only want peace and happiness for everyone. Okay? They're not going to get involved in something like this. You've got a, two residences. One of the speakers has already spoken. You can also see that on the northwest corner, it just skips that, where there was a comment, that's Janie. She spoke earlier. She was not included within the two-hundred feet, because it was probably five feet from her lot, and she sees everything that goes on there. So you can see, what I figured out is there are only ten locations that are actually residences, that are not owned by somebody else and rented out. And so your notice said there was only a ten-point-nine percent protest. If you take out those places that are owned by somebody else and live not there, and take out the double counting of the Buddhist temple, and it also includes the actual GD Express itself, which you shouldn't count, it's actually a forty percent protest rate within that two-hundred feet. So I just wanted to point that out. This also was not included in the packet you have. There was a meeting over in the West Forty-seventh. Thirty-five people showed up in opposition to this. And there was a sign-in sheet, and that was not included. I didn't put it up here, but I wanted you to know that thirty-five people showed up for that in opposition, twenty people showed up at the city-sponsored in opposition. There was only one, and interestingly enough, I believe it was the person that tried to table this, that showed up in favor. So the point I want to make then, that I'd like to expand on, is I gave some past documents in which I expressed concerns with potential violations of the carryout liquor-alcohol City Code 5.10 that I observed at GD Express, and I tried finding out who is responsible for enforcing City Code 5.10 for operations of these carryout-type places. I talked to the city legal department, the city community planning and economic development department, the city revenue department, who does the, the licenses, two officers with the city police department, and the fire marshal, and none of them claimed responsibility for managing Section 5.10, which isn't the crime that happens around this place and places like it that Janie talked about, but it's the actual operation of the establishment itself in, consistent with code. So, and, and the police said, "We don't do it, and we're going to need training if we're going to be expected to do that, because we don't know anything about this code." And it also involves Iowa code as well, so it's going to have to be some extensive. I requested the council and the mayor to look into this two weeks ago to find out if, I might have missed something. I called everyone that they pointed to that I should call, and then I ran out of ideas. To find out yourself if there is anybody that is enforcing this. So considering that I couldn't find any, I would like to show you some pictures. To start out, oh, not coincidentally, after I gave that presentation two weeks ago, people at the establishment began making corrections relevant to the points that I brought up at the city meeting that night, in the rain, in the dark, and by ten o'clock the next morning, some of those things had been corrected. So somehow, the information got from here to that establishment. They started making some corrections. So again, I reiterate my objection to this rezoning. I reiterate, reiterate my objection to twenty-four hours, to expanding alcohol, and I really reiterate that we need to get somebody in this city that is doing spot checks unannounced and enforcing City Code 5.10 and the state liquor code for carryouts. So I went in, this, you can see the front door on the left, and you can see what they're selling there, right by the front door, unsecured, and that's in violation, potential violation. I mean, I'm not a police. A 5.10.106. Here's a close-up. You can see that it's not soda. I went in the other day, and they're now selling wine there. So they moved all the vodka away from there, and now it's wine. One of the other potential violations of Code 5.10.40.1 is the windows are supposed to be open, and they're able to be seen from the outside, seven feet up. This is one of the windows. You can also see a broken window right there, which isn't helpful. We know about broken windows in neighborhoods. So that's covered by equipment. These, this was covered by, this is before I gave my last presentation. This was covered by banners all the way down to the bottom. The third concern is liquor-related litter on the public highway, and I will tell you, if they start selling food in there twenty-four hours, you're going to, you ever walk around any of the fast-food places? There's going to be a lot of trash from those places as well. But this is just in a half hour walking up and down, well, just walking up North Pine towards GD Express, all the mini-bottles we found at one time. And this was just the other day. In about a minute, I picked that up across the street from GD Express in front of the Buddhist temple. And you can see, those are all new. And one of them, when I went past an hour before, wasn't there. Now, the next concern I've got, they keep saying they're good neighbors. This is what we have to look at. This is out back. You can see there's a big cargo thing, which we have no idea what's, we have no idea what's in that. Okay? But it's there. We've got a mess. We've got broken concrete, and that's their dumpster. This is where we met for the city meeting, the city-sponsored neighborhood meeting. We met behind there. This is their huge cooler for beer, and a lot of that is open to the public. It's pretty ugly, I think. And then, this is the house adjacent. This is looking through their broken fence into the land that they have bought. You can see that the grass has not been cut, and there's, there's just weeds all around the, the broken fence as well. And this is the land- And this is the land that they purchased from Boundary LLC, 12 feet with the intention to expand that direction. You can see how close it is to the house. And again, hadn't been mowed until somebody called, until after the meeting where I came and did my presentation. And at the meeting, at the city meeting where we held it behind, Mr. Ortiz made it clear, because I brought up, "You can still make this place look better, you just can't expand it or change it. You can make it look better." He says, "I'm not going to make it look better unless I get my rezoning." I do not think that is a good neighbor policy at all. So I wanted to tell you that I think you have a 40% response protest from the people within 200 feet, if you include only the people that live there and not our renters because it went to the owners of the rental houses, not to the people that actually live there, not a 10% because you can't count the gas station, you can't count the Buddhist temple twice, and you've got one of the places, places is owned by somebody in Council Bluffs and he's trying to sell it, including, he sold some of it to GD Express. So he doesn't care. I really do encourage you, please, will you find out who is responsible for enforcing this? And if there is nobody responsible enforcing it, which is what I found, the, both the state and the local city code, we have got to have somebody doing this, not only at GD Express, but all across. They own 10 sites here and then one in Leclerc and one in Eldridge. And there's problems. The information that Janie, and I've added this to the packet as well, that summary of the crime reports, the city reports from the police, they're all high. If you want your police working on things that are really important, start enforcing these gas station liquor stores that are stuck in the middle of neighborhoods. And let's work together to get that done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment on this item? Come on up and state your name and address for the record, please. That's okay ma'am, you can wait up here.
Hi, my name's Ryan York. We stay at 4619 Cheyenne Avenue. My driveway is in the red circle right there. I don't have a lot to say, but I'm against it, definitely. Me and my daughters are constantly picking up trash, like the picture she showed of all the empty liquor bottles, blunt wrappers, all kinds of stuff just going down that street right there. I've heard people mentioning about the traffic and everything, just at that four-way stop right in front of the gas station, people run the stop sign trying to hurry up and get in there. I've almost been hit multiple times when it's my turn to go. They don't even care, they just fly in there and look at you stupid. When it's nice out, we have the windows open like most people do when it's nice out and you can hear loud systems just constantly sitting there for 15 minutes, just pounding their system and people peeling out and just doing all kinds of ignorant things, but mainly it's the trash, the litter. Like she said, if it's 24-hour food, it's going to get more than just liquor bottles and blunt wrappers. There's going to be food and garbage all over the whole area. However long it takes them to eat it or drink it, it's going to be a couple blocks from that place. So, I don't know, I just wanted to put my two cents in there and say that I'm against it.
Thank you. Ma'am, you were waiting. State your name and address.
My name's Lydia McCready. I live at 4716 North Pine Street, which is candy corner from the gas station. I've lived in this area for 50 years and it's been a great neighborhood. And yeah, we have a lot of problems with the tavern, which we've tried to cool down, but as far as the gas station being open 24 hours and having the tavern, I'm afraid it's going to be a lot worse. And not only that, the only complaint I really have about the station is, fine, stay open until 10, but you let people load her. I mean, it's really terrible how they let the people stand there and just party and have a good time. And at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning, my husband and I are old, we're kind of tired of it. So that's my only thing I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing and hearing no one, I move to close this public hearing.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. And just before I pass this back to the mayor, just to let everyone know, in the actual agenda, when this comes back up, I'll be making a motion to table it and then we'll take a voice vote, so this will be tabled for two weeks out. So mayor, back to you.
Thank you very much, Alderman Rossin. Our next public hearing is, yes sir.
Closing the public hearing.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. Yes, I'm making a motion to close the public hearing. I thought I got it all in favor. Oh, I didn't do the all in favor, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, mayor, now it's back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Rossin. Next is our public hearings in Public Works. Alderman Dunn will chair that public hearing. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, your honor. We have four public hearings this evening for Public Works. I open the first public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the FY '20 sanitary sewer repair program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Civic Access ADA Ramp Program project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? This public hearing is closed. I open the third public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the permeable paver alley and alley from Pheasant Creek to Lombard between Myrtle and Vine. Is there anyone wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? This public hearing is closed. And finally, public hearing, I open public hearing number four on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the construction of a Lego block retaining wall along an unnamed tributary of Silver Creek between Pine Street and Hillendale Road. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? This public hearing is closed and this is it for Public Works, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Again, just as a quick clarification, the public hearings open up these discussions. You'll see many of these items in our agenda as well, but we're, again, in our, all our effort to be transparent, we let everybody know there's a public hearing starting these discussions and they will go on, in many of them, for six weeks of discussion on those. So our third area is finance and Alderman Mattson will lead that public hearing.
Thank you, your honor. Number one, public hearing authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents to convey city-owned parcel Gulf 0049-401125 West 7th Street to the 180 Zone. Just so you know, we're going to recommend, staff is going to recommend to delete in the agenda, but is there anybody from the public that would like to talk? I see people moving but not coming forward, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good. And number two, a public hearing for the proposed action by the city of Davenport to authorize the renewal of electric and natural gas franchise agreements with Mid-American Energy Company. Anybody from the public like to comment on that? Very good, I make a motion to, or accept a motion to close the public hearing? All in favor? Very good. Back to you, mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. We have a presentation tonight and I am honored to be able to have this opportunity to read it this evening and I'm going to ask two of my veterans on the council to join us. It'd be Alderman Mattson and Alderman Klul will join when we go up and make the presentation, but it reads as follows. On, whereas on June 6, 1944, Mr. Henry Langer stooped near the open door of a C-47 transport plane on his way to France. Below him were 5,000 ships crossing the English Channel on their way to breaches of Normandy. And whereas, as his aircraft crossed the coast, the small orange explosions began peppering his plane. Next to him, shrapnel hit a fellow paratrooper. To his left, the plane lost a wing. When the jump light turned green, Mr. Langer, only 19-years-old, leapt out the door. And whereas, in the chaos of the night, most jumpers missed their drop zones, members of his regiment floated down directly into the town of St. Mary's Igles amid the pandemonium of burning buildings in the town square. Of the 18 on his plane who left England, only six survived. And whereas, jumping from just 500 feet, he had only enough time to, for his parachute to open before crashing through the glass of a greenhouse. Right behind him was his friend who got hung up on a village church steeple and only survived by feigning death for hours. And whereas, Mr. Langer fought through the infamous French hedgerows for weeks before being severely wounded and taken prisoner by the German army. Briefly interned at Auschwitz, he was sent to a work camp deep in, behind German lines. Mr. Langer eventually escaped, evading westward from his German captors for two weeks before turning himself into an American unit, still wearing his original D-Day uniform almost a year later. And whereas, after the war, Mr. Langer returned to Clinton, Iowa, where he became a successful small business owner. He married his hometown sweetheart, and she's here this evening, his hometown sweetheart, and raised a family, including a son who would go on to serve two tours in Vietnam, as well as two grandsons and a great-grandson who would eventually serve the very same airborne unit Mr. Langer was in on D-Day. And whereas, citizens of the city of Davenport extend their gratitude and appreciation to Mr. Henry Langer for his service and sacrifice, now we therefore, Frank Klipsch, Mayor, City of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim June 5, 2019, as Mr. Henry Langer Day in the city of Davenport, dated this 5th day of June 2019. I move the proclamation. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign? Thank you. Mr. Langer, you want to join us up at the podium? And the family, come on up with you.
Why don't we do, before we go up there, Mr. Langer, why don't we have a picture with your wife right here first? Why don't we do all together, her and the kids all around? Come on up, sir. You can stay right here, yeah. Will, why don't you stand over here? We're going to picture the wife before we go up there. Get the family snuggle in here. We'll look up right up there, we'll get the picture. Pretty impressive that he can get up and down that quickly. So now, if you want to wait for us here, we're going to go up there for a minute. I'm going to break the middle there. Why don't we stand here and we'll face out that way and I'll make the presentation. As it was sold, this is the Air Force guy who, from the Army Division that brought him here, and this is the guy who's a fellow paratrooper. So we're delighted to have them joining us as well. And I want to shake your hands and present this to myself. Why don't we look up and look up that way and get our picture taken? And I have one other thing I want to give you. You're familiar with command coins.
Oh, yes.
Well, I have one we made for the city and for my office as mayor and I want to give that to you as well.
Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate it. It's a pleasure being here. It's an honor.
Well, it's an honor for us to have you here. Thank you very much. And how old are you?
95.
This is, this is what 95 should look like, by the way. So, thank you very much for your service. It was an honor to read this proclamation. I'm glad, we all can be supportive, but thank you very much for your service and it makes us proud to be part of this country, to have, knowing what you did for so many of us. Thank you. You're very welcome. You know, as we were just talking, how do you top that? I think we just ought to call it an end and go home, but no, we won't. But we'll stay and finish. But thank you. If you guys want to stay as long as you want, if you'd like to leave, you can. We have quite a few items on the agenda yet, so you might want to. You're probably going out for a dance or something, so we wanted to make sure you have the time to do that. Thank you so much for being here. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, the whole family. We're going to move on to partitions and communications from the council and myself. Doing the community engagement tonight, in Alderman McGinnis' absence, Alderman Ambrose is going to read some of those items tonight. Thank you, Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, your honor. I've got some big shoes to fill and I'm very humble. The first item is a Flood Fest. A flood relief benefit concert planned for Friday, June 7th, will feature performers of All Sweat Productions, a tribute to Queen, Mike, that'll be up your alley, and Root Punch and special guest Lexi. The evening festivities will be emceed by comedian Chris Lektine, who also will perform between sets. All proceeds from the concert will support downtown Davenport flood recovery efforts. Tickets are available at Ticketmaster's. Doors open at the River Center Great Hall at 6:30 PM. The concert begins at 7:30. The concert is being produced by the River Center in collaboration with Downtown Davenport Partnership, Moller Nights, The River Music Experience, and Rexrode Sound. The event also features Downtown Davenport merchants impacted by the flood, as vendors in the lower concourse outside of the Great Hall, as well as bar sales featuring downtown vendors, Bootleg Mill Meadery, Front Street Brewery, The Great River Brewery. Pross from the onsite t-shirt sales also will be donated back to recovery efforts. Nearly 20 vendors are expected to be at the event. Please mark your calendar for Davenport's first Party in the Park at Cork Hill Park on Thursday, June 13th. Free food, fun, and entertainment begins at 5:30 PM and goes until 7:30 PM. Everybody in the community is invited. And finally, the most important issue. June 3rd, Alderman McGinnis will be holding a ward meeting, and that's Sunday. June 9th, from 2:00 to 3:00 PM, will be a tour of the newly renovated Naval Station Apartments at the historic Buchanan School, 2104 West 6th Street. Will be joined by residents of the first ward, please plan to arrive no later than 2:30 PM. The transformation of the derelict building and the site is nothing short of amazing. That's a building that's just west of the February Pool and it's been a nuisance for a long time and the gentleman has rehabbed it and it's really incredible. And I would encourage everybody, find some time to go down and check it out. So, it's hard to fulfill Alderman McGinnis' presentations because she does a wonderful job, but I tried. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Klul.
Thank you, mayor. Probably everyone is aware, reading the paper, that the Putnam has a new CEO. Rachel Steiner was selected as the new CEO. Kim Finley has been CEO for probably over 10 years there and I'm on the Putnam Board, I'm the designee from the council. And Kim has done a wonderful job in putting the museum on good financial, good financial ground. And now, I think with our new hire of Rachel, we're going to move in a direction that is not burdened so much by making sure that we have funding, but being able to create and work with the board's vision for the Putnam Museum out in West Davenport. I was on the selection committee and there were a number of very well-qualified people who applied for the job and I think that we're very fortunate to have Rachel stepping into that role.
Thank you, Alderman Klul. Alderman Rossin.
Thank you, your honor. Just to follow up, yes, I was going to mention Cork Hill Park next Thursday, June 13th, from 5:30 to 7:30. That's in fifth ward and we will all be out in force. Uh, that's in 5th Ward, and we will all be out in force to have that party in the park. Uh, but in addition to that, two days later on Saturday, also at Cork Hill Park, we are meeting at 9:30 in the morning to do a pretty massive cleanup on, on the east side of Davenport. We've targeted three areas. One is Kirkwood Boulevard, that runs from Brady all the way down to the Village for just debris and garbage pickup, and broken limbs and whatnot. And we've targeted Oneida, that runs from 10th Street down to River Drive, and the community garden area that's at 13th and Grand. So we'll have three groups of people heading out. We are providing some food and beverage afterwards at 11:30 back at Cork Hill Park. So again, we're meeting at Cork Hill on Saturday at 9:30 in the morning for cleanup, so everyone is welcome to come help us beautify our neighborhood, uh, and get out and, and pick up a lot of the garbage that's sort of accumulated with all the rain and, and whatnot. So, I look forward to seeing you. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Russen. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thanks to a couple of my colleagues and the mayor, um, and the Riverfront Improvement Commission, and quite frankly, Canadian Pacific. We had a nice discussion today, and it was good to see that they came in, in town, into town, uh, to publicly, at least, discuss with us and the Riverfront Improvement Commission some of the issues that a lot of people are concerned with. So thanks, Mayor, and all the people that were there, and I hope the conversation continues, and, and it was just good to see them at least come and visit with us. Thank you.
Great, thank you, and I agree. Um, again, it was a good group. I, I reached out to them, and their senior vice president got on a plane and came here and sat down to talk with us. So, uh, we're encouraged by that and all the community coming together. And one other item about coming together, uh, Alderman Kuhl, uh, does a great job representing us on the Putnam Board, um, but we just also signed the other day the collaborative agreement with the FIGI. So now both the FIGI and the Putnam, and the reason that's of, of special note, uh, it's a collaboration between the, the, the two institutions, the public sector being us, and the private sector all coming together and contributing to that. It's not a burden on anybody individually, it's all of us coming together to protect those long-term assets for our community. So thanks to all my colleagues, all the staff, uh, for helping pull that together. Seeing no other communications today, we're gonna move on to action, action items for discussion. Our first area to be discussed is community development, and Alderman Russen is our chair, and Alderman Ambrose will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have several items on the community development agenda. First item is a third consideration, ordinance for case REZ 19-02, request of Jennifer Smith, SJ56 LLC Russell, to rezone Lot 1 of Crow Valley Plaza, 12th Edition, from CT Commercial Transitional District to COP Commercial Office Park. Property contains 9.58 acres and is located on East 56th Street, east of Utica Ridge Road. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a third consideration ordinance for case REZ 19-03, request of the city of Davenport for a zoning map amendment from RMF Multi-Family Residential District to CT Commercial Transitional Zoning District on one acre, more or less, for the property located at 709 East 46th Street. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Third item, third consideration ordinance for case REZ 19-04, request of the city of Davenport for zoning map amendment from C2 Corridor Commercial Zoning District to RMF Multi-Family Residential District on .25 acres, more or less, for the property located at 641 and 643 East 46th Street, west, the west sixty feet only. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number four is a second consideration ordinance for case REZ 19-05, request of John Wolfe to rezone 6401 West Kimberly Road from R1 Single Family Residential District to I1 Light Industrial District. Property contains .42 acres. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number five, first consideration ordinance for case REZ 19-06, being the request of Jasvir Saini to rezone .56 acres, more or less, of property located at 4607 North Pine Street, from C1 Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District to C2 Corridor Commercial Zoning District. Um, and the P&amp;Z Commission does recommend a denial request with a supermajority, which is eight out of ten of council. Um, and I was, I would make, I will be making a motion and asking for a second, but is there anyone from the public who wants to add anything additional to this item that hasn't already spoken? Anyone from council that wants to speak? I see Alderman, Alderwoman Dickman.
Thank you. I just wanted to, um, I know that there's been a request for tabling. Um, I think the neighbors have spoken fairly clearly. Um, I would rather not continue to drag this out, but, um, if it does go to tabling, then we'll continue from there. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, the neighbors make a very compelling case, and I live in a district that has a lot of restaurants, a lot of fast food, a lot of liquor establishments and bars, and the important thing is, these owners are very conscientious of my neighborhood, and, you know, the customers, when they leave, you know, sometimes they're not the best neighbors. So, after listening to the neighbors, you know, I think the owner's got a responsibility now to step up to the plate and make sure his area is pleased, and I'm, I'm sure he will, but, uh, you know, people come in and purchase goods, whether it's fast food, and they leave, and I see it every day, and it, it's, it's real frustrating when I see them pitching things out the window. Unfortunately, Alderman Russen's neighborhood's gonna do a pickup, and that's a, that's a great neighborhood, but, you know, to be a good neighbor, you gotta look out for your neighbors, you gotta pick up around your neighborhood, and if you got a neighbor that needs some assistance, you know, you should be reaching out and helping them out. But a business, you're responsible to be a good neighbor, and being a good neighbor is keeping your area pleased up and, uh, being very conscientious of what's happening with your neighbors. Thanks.
Alderman Gripp.
Thank you. Could I have, uh, the staff person?
Thank you, Ryan Rustnack, Community Planning.
Hey, Ryan. Um, do you have the hours that the gas station operates currently?
I believe they're open till 12 o'clock on weekdays and 2:00 AM on weekends.
And will that change with the rezoning?
Uh, I'm not sure. I have heard indication that with a larger store, they may want to be open for 24 hours, um, but certainly there are restrictions with the state of how late you can sell alcohol.
Is that a zoning issue, or how is that, how is that time determined?
So, they would be open from a convenience store aspect to be open for 24 hours. Um, they are limited by state law about the hours that they can sell alcohol.
Okay. Um, do we have an answer, uh, on who does the enforcement of the carryout liquor sales? Is that our, is that our code enforcement folks?
It's generally done on a, it would be on a complaint basis, and the group that would do it is, is our Neighborhood Services Division, our co, civil code enforcement folks.
Okay. So, so what you're saying is that we, the, the city of Davenport does not have a program where we are going into convenience stores and monitoring this, but if there is a complaint that our Neighborhood Services Department would go, they are trained and they can en- enforce this? Is that correct?
If they're not trained, they would be.
Okay. All right. Um, and then, as I under, as I understand it, uh, the request is to go from a, a C1 to a C2, and currently in the C1, um, the liquor sales is a non-conforming use, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, um, if they stopped selling liquor there, and they sold the property, the next, the next owner would not be able to sell liquor? Is that how that works?
If they're, continue to operate as is?
Okay.
If, if, if I understand your question correctly, so if they're a non-conforming use and they sell the property, the, uh, subsequent owner could come in and, and continue the use-
They can, okay, they can continue the use.
-have to cease for a period of at least one year.
One year, okay. Um, so, if, if that, uh, if it goes to a, uh, C2, then, uh, liquor sales is a conforming use?
It's a permitted use, that's correct.
Is that correct? Permitted use? So, they would go from being, uh, allowable but non-conforming to a, a conforming use?
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Madam. I apologize. Um, if I could have by next Wednesday, Chief, I think, a validation and, and a request, Ms. Spiegel, for the police, um, and the lady has, looks like a pretty good list, but if you could do your research for us by next Wednesday, I'd appreciate that. And then, just a question, council, what's the, what's the reasoning for tabling? So, thank you.
Uh, I would direct that to staff. I'm not sure, since it's the, an item on the agenda that the petitioner's requesting himself to table, they have that right to do that. We don't necessarily need the reasoning.
You're welcome.
Okay. Staff, would you like to provide the reasoning behind the tabling request?
Yes, I did speak with the property owner, and, and he thought that perhaps additional time would give him an opportunity to speak again and engage with the residents, uh, to see possibly if there was a path forward that, that they could be successful.
Okay. And that seems reasonable to me. Is that good? Okay. Anyone else on council like to comment on this item? Um, if not, I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion to, um, table this for a cycle. There's a motion and a second. Um, all, I'm gonna do a voice vote, so all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, so two opposed? Or do we need to do a voice, a roll call?
Roll call.
Do a roll call? Can we have a roll call vote? Sorry, Brian. We're keeping you on your toes.
Okay. Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Russen?
Yes.
Dickman?
No.
Tomkins?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Kuhl?
Yes.
Mattson?
No.
And Dunn?
Yes.
Uh, seven yeses and two noes, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Um, that item will be tabled. Item number six, resolution supporting an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Moline, the city of Rock Island, and the city of Davenport to complete a housing needs assessment. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do we have someone from staff to explain what a housing assess, assessment is, and why we might need it?
Bruce Berger, Community Planning and Economic Development. Um, it, the housing needs assessment is something that is required by HUD, um, or at least recommended by HUD, that we do, um, periodically. Last one was done five years. Typically, we do them every five. Um, this year, we're looking at coordinating with Rock Island and Moline to help kind of save some costs. Um, and it, and basically, the nature of the report is, it will let you know, um, if, if there's a need for more two bedrooms at a certain price range, if there's a need for more single-family, it kind of gives a, a snapshot of the, of each community.
Thanks, Bruce.
And the report will be ready in the spring of 2020, roughly?
I'm, I'm not exactly sure. I believe if this would be approved, we'd go out and select someone by fall, and it usually takes three to five months or so to do, so yeah, probably spring.
All right, thank you. Oops.
Tried to save you some steps there, Bruce. Uh, I noticed that one of our, uh, community partners is not listed here, was Betendorf engaged in this, and, and why did they choose not to go with the other three?
I don't believe Betendorf is, um, an entitlement community for CDBG funds, and so as a result, they're not under the same compulsion.
So that, this comes from the CDBG dollars, and since they don't take those dollars, they don't have to do these studies?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Mattson.
Uh, yeah, the, so the report, uh, uh, the short answer is yes. Yeah, we-
We're supporting the study.
Yeah, it's, it's a document that, um, I think we all use pieces of, so yeah, that, they're looking favorably on it.
A lot of concern, uh, over the last many years about appropriate housing. Good, better, I think that we need it. I'm glad you're doing it. I'm glad the, the city's partner, and I'm glad, and I asked the council to support it, because there's a lot of discussion about the needs, and I think there's a valid, uh, reason for us to do it, valid reason for us to find appropriate housing, so I'm, I'm glad we're doing this, and, um, as soon as we can get this approved, I, I appreciate that.
Thank you. But also to clarify, this is a report we do every five years, is it not?
Correct, yeah, I, I believe it is.
Standard, it's a standing-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna waffle, but I believe it's a five-year-
Yeah, and it does have good data, so it's a good read.
It's related to affordable housing.
Yep. Okay. Any, anyone else from council on this item? Seeing and hearing no one, that item will move on. And the last item, I'm not gonna read just simply because it relates back to the public, uh, hearing portion of the agenda that wasn't published, so I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to delete that item. Can I get a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, a voice vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? And that, uh, I'll ask Alderman, uh, Ambrose to set the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All items to the consent agenda, except, as noted, the one that was tabled.
And the one that was deleted.
And the one that was deleted.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Uh, we're done with this section of the agenda, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Russen. Again, for some people here, um, you see, and I know some people were interested in this before, when you see first, second, or third considerations, each consideration is a two-week period. So we meet this week, next week it'll be, these items will be voted on, that happens three times. So, by delaying a vote, whatever, for another cycle, means that si, that six-week period kicks in when that starts again, just so everyone's aware. Um, so thank you, Alderman Russen. Our second area is public safety. Alderman Gripp will lead that discussion, and Alderman Dickman will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a third consideration ordinance amending Schedule 6 of Chapter 10.96, entitled Speed Limits, by upgrade, updating the speed limit on 53rd Street from Brady Street to the east city limits to 40 miles per hour. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number two is a resolution closing various streets, lanes, or public grounds on the listed dates to hold outdoor events. Corn Belt Running Club, BICs at Six Training Runs, Thursday, June 13th, 2019, 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Thursday, June 20th, 2019, 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Thursday, June 27th, 2019, 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And Thursday, July 11th, 2019, 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. The closure is East 4th Street from Pershing Avenue to River, River Drive, Pershing Avenue from East 4th Street to Kirkwood Boulevard, eastbound Kirkwood Boulevard from Pershing Avenue to Jersey Ridge Road, Jersey Ridge Road from Kirkwood Boulevard, Boulevard to Middle Road, McClellan Boulevard from Middle Road to River Drive. River Music Experience Anniversary Concert, 129 North Main Street, Friday, June 14th, 2019, 12:00 PM to, is that, uh, 12:00 AM? That's Scribner's air there, we'll get that fixed. Noted. Uh, closure is, uh, Second Street from Main Street to Brady Street with access to CBI Bank and Trust. Pamela Morgan Graduation Party, 1102 Brown Street, Saturday, June 15th, 2019, 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Closure is West 11th Street from Warren Street to Brown Street. River Action Ride the River, Sunday, June 16th, 2019, 5:30 AM to 4:30 PM. Closure is southernmost parking lane on Second Street from Gaines Street to the Government Bridge. Original route was Riverfront Trail, but has to be moved due to the flooding. And Ken Hopper, 31st Qua City Air Show, Thursday, June 27th, 2019, 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Friday, June 28th, 2019, 1:30 PM to 4:30 PM. Saturday, June 29th, 2019, 12:30 to 4:30 PM. And Sunday, June 30th, 2019, uh, 12:30 PM to 4:30 PM. Closure is West 76th Street from Division Street to Sloper Town Road, Sloper Town Road east to Sterlite Entrance to Harrison Street and Northwest Boulevard at Hillendale Road. Noted that this is pending FAA approval. Is there any comments from the public on these resolutions to close streets, public grounds on the listed dates? Anyone from the council? Alderman Mattson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say it's good to have the airshow back. Thanks.
Absolutely. All right, we will move to item number three, which is motion approving noise variance requests for various events on the, the listed dates and times. River Music Experience Anniversary Concert, 129 North Main Street, Friday, June 14th, 2019, 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM, music over 50 dB. Pamela Morgan Graduation Party, 1102 Brown Street, Saturday, June 15th, 2019, 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM, outdoor music over 50 dB. Leslie Larson Birthday Party, 3424 Forest Road, Saturday, June 22nd, 2019, 2:00 PM Larson Birthday Party, 3424 Forest Road, Saturday, June 22nd, 2019, 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Outdoor music band over 50 dB. Is there any public comment on any of these four? Anyone from the council? These items will move on. Item number four is a motion approving beer and liquor license applications. A is for... Section A is new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area location transfer, et cetera. Dominga, 1525 South Concord Street, license type B beer. Quick Shop, number 584, 3624 West Locust Street, ownership update, license type C beer and B wine. El Cortez, 423 Brady Street, license type C liquor. RME Courtyard, 121 West Second Street, expanding outdoor area to include Second Street between Main Street and Brady Street, June 14th, 2019. Fifteenth Anniversary Celebration Concert, license type C liquor. Quick Star, 123, 2850 West Locust Street, ownership update, license type C beer. Granite City Food and Brewery, 5270 Utica Ridge Road, ownership update, license type C liquor. Steel Plow Burger, 1430 East 52nd Street, Suite 3, outdoor area, license type C liquor. That is a new restaurant coming to Davenport that we're happy to have here. Ward 7, Foresteros, 1510 East Kimberly Road, license type C liquor. Quick Star, number 280, 301 West Kimberly Road, ownership update, license type C beer. Quick Star, number 291, 1225 East Kimberly Road, ownership update, license type C beer and B wine. Quick Star, number 294, 1650 West Kimberly Road, ownership update, license type C beer, B wine. And Tobacco Outlet Plus Grocery, number 562, 4619 North Brady Street, ownership update, license type C beer, B native wine. And Quick Star, number 167, 2050 East 53rd Street, ownership update, license type C beer and B wine. Quick Star, number 215, 100 West 65th Street, ownership update, license type C beer and B wine. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on any of these items? Anyone from the council? These items will move on. And Section B is annual license renewals. The information is there for you to look at, but we do not read through those. And with that, I would ask Alderwoman Dickman to set the agenda.
One quick note. I did want to mention that I believe Quick Star 584 is actually in Ward 1. Its address is on Locust Street, so just for someone to double-check that. And then also, just wanted to, with all the events we've got coming up, say thank you again to all our Public Works staff, because I know it's been nonstop. But without that, or with all that, I move to place all items on consent.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderman Dickman. Our third area to be discussed is Public Works. Alderman Dunn is the chair and will lead that discussion. Alderman Condon will set the agenda. Thank you, Your Honor. I have several items on the agenda this evening. Item number one is a resolution approving the updated fee schedule for rental licenses and inspections. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution to purchase three new 35-foot low-floor diesel buses from Gilling of Livermore, California, in the amount of $1,302,351. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Clul.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A question for Ms. Gleason, I believe. I think it's great. We haven't talked about Davenport's participation in the Star Cities program for quite a while, but we are a four-star city, which recognizes some of the things that we've done, both in environment and efficiency-wise. I'm just wondering, what thought is there towards green energy and buses?
So Nicole Gleason, Public Works. This is something we've looked at on and off. One of the limiting factors is the amount of infrastructure required to put in the charging stations. It's a different type of maintenance, so we'd have to be looking at different types of training on maintenance mechanics, so it would be a pretty hefty grant in order to make something like that happen. And so I know there's been a lot of advertising going on for MetroLink and some of their electric buses, but a lot of the infrastructure was put in when they built that new facility. So that's just a little bit of the limitations that we have, so it'd be a much larger-scale project and grant required for us to transition that way.
You know, MetroLink received grants to be able to do what they did.
I know there was some grant money involved, but I don't know what the split is there.
Are we on the lookout for those grant opportunities?
We are, but again, that would be one of those things we probably would have to look at at a pretty large policy level first, because it would be a lot of Public Works infrastructure and maintenance changes.
So you're looking for something from the council, then, to set you off in that?
We probably would look for the right grant first, and then kind of ask for permission to go for it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Clul. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the blanket contract for the purchase of road salt for the 2019-2020 winter season from Cargill Incorporated of North Olmsted, Ohio, in the estimated amount of $1,187,604. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this comment? Alderman Mattson?
I just want to say it's good that we purchase ahead of time, because the price is cheaper, so we don't wait till the end and get screwed. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Alderman Clul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to somehow keep Ms. Gleason up here, but I didn't see a way to do that without seeming very confusing. I have a question in regards to road salt that we're using, and I know that we're metering now the amount of salt that we're putting down. I'm wondering about, are we increasing the amount that we're purchasing for the next fiscal year?
The upfront purchase is, I think, a little bit more than we normally would, because we just don't have anything left in our stockpile. So normally, we have a minimum amount we have to take at the beginning, and then we keep a different amount kind of on reserve to take later, and different amounts at fixed rates, kind of escalating depending, because obviously, once you get further in, there's more people using it, obviously. So this one upfront is a little bit more than we did see last year because of that, obviously, volume we use this year.
When we're making brine solution, do we use that salt to do that?
It's a different fines to use to make the brine solution, and that would be a different purchase. Some of those don't reach the level. They end up more on the 10,000 to 50,000 than they do on the ones on your agenda.
And last question, what are we doing to try to reduce the amount of salt that we're using, again, recognizing that we are a star city, four-star city?
Right. So we do, obviously, measure it, and then we... Every storm is different. We make decisions based on... We do put different amounts in residential and high-volume, and we do... If it's snowing heavily, we don't apply salt until after we know it's actually going to be useful and not just plowed away. So we do monitor and try to use as minimal amount per storm as we can.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Clul and Nicole. Hopefully, we won't have to use any salt this year, so... Good luck. Item number four is a resolution approving the blanket contract for the purchase of supplemental ice control and road salt for the 2019-2020 winter season to compass minerals America Incorporated of Overland Park, Kansas, in the amount of $78,048, or $78.48 per ton. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving the purchase of two Tamco street sweepers from Mid-Iowa Solid Waste Equipment in the amount of $535,770. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution approving the contract for the 46th Street reconstruction from Pine Street to 215 feet east of Cheyenne Avenue project to CDMI Concrete Contractors of Port Byron, Illinois, in the amount of $288,760. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution approving the contract for the downtown decorative street light LED retrofit to Davenport Electric Contract Company of Davenport in the amount of $136,771.50. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution approving a three-year agreement with Cardiograph Systems LLC at Dubuque, Iowa, in the amount of $216,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the construction of a Lego block retaining wall along the unnamed tributary of Silver Creek between Pine Street and Hillendale Road. Funding for this project will be from the FY 2020 Clean Water Operating Supplies. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the FY 20 sanitary sewer lateral repair program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 11 is a resolution approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Civic Access ADA Ramp Program Project. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 12 is a motion approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Sterilite Drainage Improvement Project. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Pretty quiet tonight. Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number 13 is a motion awarding a contract for the Intelligent Traffic Management System project to Mid-American Signal Incorporated of Kansas City, Kansas, in the amount not to exceed $85,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And finally, item number 14 is a motion approving a reimbursement agreement with Iowa American Water Company for the relocation of water valves, hydrants, and service lines as part of the Transload Rail Expansion Project in the amount of $96,000. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Condon, would you set the agenda, please?
I move to put all items on consent.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that is all set. This concludes Public Works, and back to you, Your Honor. Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Condon. Our last area to be discussed is finance. Alderman Mattson will lead that discussion, and Alderman Clul will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one in finance discussion, first consideration of an ordinance granting to Mid-American Energy Company its successors and assigns the right and non-exclusive franchise to acquire, construct, erect, maintain, and operate in the city of Davenport, Iowa, an electric system and communications facilities, and to furnish and sell electric energy to the city and its inhabitants, and authorizing the city to collect franchise fees for a period of 25 years. Anyone from the public like to discuss that? Adam?
I just have a question.
Name and ward, Adam?
Adam McWilliams, fifth ward, sorry.
Thank you.
Just had a question. Is that why there's a whole bunch of solar things kind of all over town?
Ms. Gleason? No, that's not the reason, but we can...
Okay.
She can get with you and tell you. She'll tell you later, yeah. Okay. Anyone? Thanks, Adam. That's a good observation. Anyone else? Yeah. Okay. Council? All right, that'll move on. Item two is the first consideration of an ordinance granting to Mid-American Energy Company its successors and assigns the right and non-exclusive franchise to acquire, construct, erect, maintain, and operate in the city of Davenport, Iowa, a natural gas system, and to furnish and sell natural gas to the city and its inhabitants, and authorizing the city to collect franchise fees for a period of 25 years. Anyone from the public like to comment? Council? Very good, moving on. Item three, I'll read it, and then staff recommends deletion, so I'll ask for that motion to delete. Resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents to convey city-owned partial golf 004940, 1125 West 7th Street to the 180 Zone Inc. Staff recommends deletion, so I'll entertain a motion to delete. Is there a second? All in favor? All right. Opposed? Very good. Was there an oppose?
Yeah.
Okay.
No reason why.
Okay, staff, please.
Before we... Actually, we approved it, but...
Mayor at Public Works, the adjoining property owner reached out, and they're interested in acquiring the property as well, so we just wanted to have a chance to communicate with both interested parties before bringing something to the city council.
Okay, thank you. And item number four, resolution approving the contract for the architectural services for the design and preparation of documents and the renovations to the main library building to Leggett Architects of Moline in the amount not to exceed $150,000. Anyone from the public? Council? Very good. Item five, motion approving the purchase of a one-ton dump truck with options from Courtesy Ford of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $50,178. Anyone from the public? Options? Council? Very good. Item six, motion approving the purchase of two replacement 9,300 GVW pickup trucks with options from Silver's Ford in Waukees, Iowa, in the amount of $76,216. Anyone from the public? Options? Council? Very good. And then we have some purchases of $10,000 to $50,000 for your information only. You can read those. I'll ask Alderman Clul to recommend an agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that all items be moved forward to the consent agenda with the exception of number three, which was deleted.
All right. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson and Alderman Clul. Are there any other ordinance resolutions and motions this evening? Seeing none, any public with business this evening?
Adam McWilliams, fifth ward. Couple weeks ago, I went up to Iowa State University for Special and Big Summer Games, and I did tennis, singles and doubles, and I came in second in both of my... In both of my competitions. And I'd like to, if I could, give Mike Mattson one of these for being a war veteran and serving our country for keeping everybody safe. And then my second one is to Kyle Gripp. A while back, he had a death in his family, so... And that person was somewhat kind of close to me, so the other ones for your mom and her honor. So, thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Yeah, let's give a nice round of applause. Is there anybody else with information this evening? Yes, sir. Give your name and your address or ward, please.
My name is Dwayne Womack. I'm with the Street Friends Quot Cities. I've been here before. I think Rick is from First Ward, my alternate. My wife and I, as you guys know, take things to the homeless people on the street. Today, I have some pictures of you. I'd like to see them. Of... Is it okay to bring them?
You can go up to the clerk. Give them to our clerk, please, with Brian.
That was outside of the Kings Harbor Shelter that's now closed. We have people living on the street. We have people all night long throwing stuff at them, making them feel worse than they already are. And I've reached out to your office once a week for the last 10 months without a response from you. I'm begging somebody to help do something for these people. We can't expect all my friends to help, you know, and continue this. We have a lot of friends, but, you know, we have a great city, but we're doing nothing for these poor people. Right now, they're using the restroom outside of Kings Harbor Shelter, because no place will let them go in and go to the bathroom. Is there somebody I can contact about getting a porta potty out there?
Well, first of all, you can contact me. I don't... I didn't get to me, I'm afraid to say. I don't think you and I had a chance to talk.
No, sir, for 10 months.
So why don't you, yeah, call my office tomorrow. I'll make sure they know you're coming, and we'll make sure we get a contact.
I even left you a flyer here just like three weeks ago for a benefit that we was having with no response, so...
Okay.
It'd be awesome. I was here the last time and mentioned you were gone, and I've begged your office to have you call me.
Okay, well, I will definitely check on it.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
My name is Nancy Agen. I'm in fourth ward. One thing I found out tonight from Mike Mattson, well, I'd noticed a few weeks ago that the meetings played on the TV on MediaCom. You could only see, like about a month ago, the... You could only see, like, about a month ago, that you could see the table here and you could hear the voices, couldn't see any of you or in the audience. But apparently they're not broadcasting the meetings anymore. I think it'd just be nice to, and he gave some information about them improving the computer viewing it that way. How you can go to just a specific part, part of the meeting. I take it that's right, or would you like to add anything to that, just to inform the public of it?
We'll certainly have you talk about that. They'll make sure we have the, it is online now, so that's, so the picture is, they're working through that.
Yeah, okay. Other issues are with the city bus. When you do refill your card online, it doesn't forewarn you of, uh, of this, but at the end of your making the payments and putting all that in, it then shows a message unless they've changed it. This will not be updated till, for two days. So your card updated doesn't take effect for two days. But if you go down to the bus station, then it's updated right then and there. And that's, you know, I think they could improve on that. And I've wondered now and then why we can't pay for more than one month. They won't even take that. You can just do it one month at a time. Maybe an improvement to make. I've sent the city emails. The bus department handed papers to them here. Told them verbally that, uh, they, they've been told in person, like I said, for two to three years ago, there was a bus stop place set up at Marycrest. They have never put a bus schedule there for that specific area, even a citywide map. No smoking sign, nothing, nothing has been put there. I've let them know off and on for the last three years probably, maybe a bit more. There's still no information there for people who are new to the city, new to riding the bus, nothing. Also, I'm assuming it's because of the moisture in the winter, the snows. They have a door that you can open at the bus stops and they put the schedules in there and the no smoking signs. They really need to send a person around to all of those because I know the one out at Walmart, it's faded, it's become moist. You can't really read it, it's not clear. They might send someone around to update those. Let's see, at the city bus place, they would have signs up there a couple of years ago to watch your language, behave properly, et cetera, and would give examples. If not, you're going to be tossed out, and they did that. But now if you mention a slay of cuss words to an employee there, it's, hey, they talk that way. But I would bet that if those people were up here in this building, I bet they'd be shooed out pretty quickly. So why do they tolerate it down there and would not tolerate it here? It's like, at times it almost comes across like it's like just trash people. Because they don't update things, you get the minimal service, even on the computer, like I said. You go down to, you go down to update, you do it in forty minutes. But it takes two days for them to truly update your card. But in the meantime, you'd have to pay it during, during that time. At the bus stop downtown on River Drive, they have those pillars holding the building up, of course. And on those, they're probably this big, each one, no smoking. What are people doing out there? Smoking. I've asked the city employee, you know, can they address that, have them smoke elsewhere? They say, call the police. I've asked the police, they say the city should do it. Numerous places like Genesis, whether it be grocery stores or whatever, they will send an employee out to some, hey, no smoking sign, can you please get off the property? Why can't the city do that? They can't send someone out and remind people, hey, no smoking signs? It's again, like they don't care. The bus schedules. That, when they went to the booklets, they printed them out on individual pages for a while. And, oh, actually before that, the previous bus schedules that they had, before they did all the updates. They had on each page, like say Route Nine, they had a few, three or four places, distinct places like a grocery store, medical office pointed out on those routes. And they would also put on those pages connects to, and I'm just naming numbers, Route Ten, Route Two, Route Eight, what numbers they connect with. They don't even offer that information. You have to figure it all out yourself and make your own notes and everything. They've got to look into this and, you know, be halfway decent about the information that you're giving out. Because if a person asks me, you know, hey, how's Davenport? Would I, would you want to, how do you like living there? Or if they, they were thinking of moving here, are you going to have a person riding the bus system? No. Go to a much more improved city.
Thank you. I would ask if you would, Brandon is indirectly our, who's it, Nicole? Nicole, bring your concerns, let her have those.
I have.
And, uh, and.
Like I said, they've been emailed verbally, called on the phone, handed over here after meetings, before meetings, so.
We'll follow up on it now that, thank you for bringing it to our attention. Thank you. Anyone else at this point?
Matt Trimble, twenty-one Oak Lane, fifth ward. I'm a cyclist and I'm usually on the riverfront trail. It's been an experience like we're all aware of. And if, if you've spent any time down near the, uh, the craft plant, the facility, there's a shell station that's underwater and it has been for like six weeks or whatever. Is there anything built in, it's more maybe a question for staff? Is there anything built into that structure that, you know, when, when it was approved for placement on the river, you know, that, that it's protective so there isn't seepage or leaching into the groundwater? It's a big question and it's late, we're trying to get out of here. Just wondering if there's any information that I could get or we could make public about what's going on with that?
I would think that would be Nicole too, I would assume. Yeah, Nicole's our Public Works Director. Why don't you bring that to her attention as well? That would be helpful. Okay, thank you. She's right there. The one everybody's pointing at right now, that's the one. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name is Tom Rungwald Jacobson. I live at fifteen oh-one Bridge Avenue and it's in the fifth ward. I want to back up the gentleman who we're talking about, the people that have, have, have the homeless difficulties. I've been doing some volunteer work on my own with people who are homeless, just helping folks out kind of thing and stuff like that. It's a difficult problem. It's the kind of, kind of problem that as far as our city is concerned, can be seen as, as a blight on, on our surface where, where we have certain places where people congregate, that it looks bad and other things like that. And, but these folks have some serious issues, serious problems. I think that as a city, we may be able to develop some kind of strategy that would minimize those kinds of things, probably never, never eliminate those kinds of problems. But anyway, I, I, I think that he's hit on a positive thing. And policy-wise, I know there are other cities. Many years ago, I lived in Oakland Bay Area and some of those places out there have homeless issues too and they try to address it at least by the sanitary problems and other things like that. I think we could do, as a city, do something to minimize stuff and help people who have these problems get some self-esteem and, and get back on track. So I, uh, I'm, I'm glad that have an opportunity to address you with that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, is there any reports we have, or city officials? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? There's a move, a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign? Adjourn.